Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, August 16th, 2022. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcast. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. May I have a motion to open the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
All right, second. John Howe-Crawf. Do we need a roll call? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting is in order.
I'd like just to note, Mrs. Downing is absent today.
Very good. All right, we're going to do approval of minutes, payrolls, and warrants. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 10th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstain.
Obstain. One abstention. Can I have a motion to approve of the executive session minutes of May 10th, 2022 not to be released?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And no abstentions. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 7th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Obstain.
One abstention. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session minutes of June 7th, 2022 not to be released? Did I redo that one?
Did we do that?
I'm sorry.
No, we haven't done that one.
We haven't, right?
No, you just did the regular.
Okay.
Sure, okay.
Don't ruin my order. Um, let me re-say that again. Can I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes of June 7th, 2022 not to be released?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Obstain.
One abstention. Can I have an approval of the minutes for June 28th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstain.
Another abstention, Kelly.
It's an aye, Kelly.
Approval, um, can I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes of June 28th, 2022 not to be released?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstain.
One abstention. And I have a final motion to approve the payroll and warrants.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No abstentions. All right, moving on to delegation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? No delegation for today. And we do not have any old business, so we're going to move right on to new business with the superintendent's report, Dr. Billy.
Thank you. And welcome back to our first school committee meeting for the year. As you can see from the report, we have nine new staff members who have been hired since the last meeting, six resignations, one retirement, one termination, and three transfers. And just to give you a sense of, you know, upcoming, very few positions are open. We have two cap workers, and that just came to us a few days ago. We have a teacher that's pending, are ready to hire at middle school. And actually, we had talked about this during our budget subcommittee meeting, but in place of the TIS, we were hiring an ELA teacher, which is what the principal wanted. And we want to see how this goes, so direct service, get our scores up. We have a custodian opening, a maintenance worker opening, and one para, and possibly a one-to-one, we're not sure yet. So really, very few positions are open, and we're looking forward to getting started with the new year.
So just for all parents concerned in both schools, all the major classes are covered?
Oh, yeah, all the teachers, yeah, we don't have any teacher openings. What I will say is, we have our nurses in place, but to be transparent, we do have nurses going out on maternity leave. So we will have to, the beginning of the year and all the way up to February, we have two nurses, one at each school, one's going out first, and the other one. So up until February, we will have some substitute nurses, but we do have nurses in place, it's just that we have eternity leaves.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Do we get an annualized type of personnel report that, you know, that capitalizes the whole year, like how many resignations we've had during the year, and how many, you know?
Hires and all that for the whole year.
Yeah, we've never done that, but if that's something that the committee wants, we can certainly put that together.
I think, yeah, and I think maybe we've talked about it at previous meetings, but I think with the past year or whatever, with COVID, it kind of got backtracked, but we talked about putting together some types of, type of exit survey.
Which we've been, we've been doing, exit interviews.
So I think it would be helpful to, if we can, report out on that, you know, to the committee.
Report out in what way?
So I personally would like to understand, and I'm not talking about detailed information about personnel, but if we have an overarching theme around why people are leaving, I think it would be important for the committee to understand that, right, as we plan and understand what the rationale or the reasons are that people are leaving the district, without sharing, you know, obviously confidential information.
Yeah, I can tell you for this month, you see a couple of people, I think they were offered more lucrative opportunity. And sometimes it's just geography, but the sense I'm getting, and this is typical at the end of a school year, starting a new school year, to have more resignations. So we only have six, which is not completely terrible for the end of the year, beginning of the year. But yes, we have been doing the exit interviews whenever we can, whenever the employee agrees to it, but without getting into the weeds, if you're looking for themes such as payment or money, issues or geography, we can certainly share that in a general way.
I certainly would be, I think there's a lot of reporting out, actually, over the past week or two, like nationwide, in terms of the number of teachers resigning and the shortages, and, and again, I just think as a committee, it would be good for us to be proactive to look at some of these themes and think about what we can do, should we start to be impacted by things like that.
Absolutely, and I think, you know, quite frankly, we already started that work in our negotiations, we're going into a new contract with the teachers, and we're really trying to be competitive because, as you said, throughout the country, there are teacher shortages right now, which is really scary. And to think that's how it is now, I can't even imagine what it would be in five or 10 years from now. So that's something we're definitely interested in looking at as well, so yes.
And just, just to know also, Mr. Howe-Crawf, that there's on this, there's only one teacher here. The rest are cafeterials.
No, absolutely.
So let's just, just note that for the public.
Right, I mean.
Uh, but so it's not.
And the other one, you know, I can say this publicly, the para got a teaching job. She actually worked her way up and got a job in another district, and we didn't have anything available for her at the time, but, I mean, I'm happy for her because, you know, this is what she wanted, so she's bettering herself, she's not taking a lateral move in another district, she was extremely happy here, so.
I think that's fine. Well, maybe we can take this up in the next agenda for the next meeting. So we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Howe-Crawf.
Yeah, no, but I think I agree with you, Mr. Howe-Crawf, that an annualized personnel report, it helps us in future planning, it helps us in getting a clear picture. Also, I don't know how many employees we have, you know, and that should be, you know, in the report, and, and so I think, I think it gives us, helps, gives us a good direction to the, to where we hope to be heading.
Absolutely.
So we will note that.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you're highly capable, looking at other personnel reports from other, you know, other communities, if, you know, see if there's any prototypes out there that, you know, give some, some ideas.
I will find one, and if I can, I'll make one up.
I'm sure you will, so.
I'll make it up.
All right, thank you.
Yep. So any other questions on the personnel report? Okay. Next, I would call to the podium our Director of Student Services, Kim Betancourt. We recently had a tiered focus monitoring review from DESI. Kim will be explaining to you what that entailed, what it is, and basically how we fared with it in our district, so thank you so much, Kim.
So I wanted to first go over what the process is. I think everybody remembers the old CPR, and DESI came in and did audits, record reviews, interviewed staff, there was a whole host of things that they did. They've kind of changed that over the last, maybe five years or so, to be more of a tiered focus monitoring. So it puts the onus on the district to really self-assess, look at different areas, and then report to DESI your findings. They give you ample time to remedy any concerns you may have had, some areas of weakness, and then they come out and do just a matter of a day or so and go over all of those. So for us, it's a six-year cycle, we were in the three, the third of the sixth year, they come out twice within six years. And this round, we had to do special education and civil rights self-assessments. So as I mentioned, there's two cycles. This year, we were in cycle B, so they looked at our licensure, professional development, our parents, student, and community engagement, they toured our facilities, we did some classroom observations, they looked at our oversight of programs and staffing, time on learning, and equal access. When they come back in three years, they'll be looking at records and more of those things. We reported on 10 special education criteria and 16 civil rights criteria. We also participated in an onsite visit, they did tour both schools, they interviewed the superintendent, they interviewed myself, as well as the chairperson of our special parent advisory council. This is just a quick chart of all the special education, the ones on the left that say SE was a special education criterion, and the ones on the right that say CR are civil rights. So those are all the criterion number that we had to report on, that we self-assessed and we reported to DESI. We were partially implemented in one of the civil rights, and I'll talk a little bit about that further down in detail. We had zero non-implemented, and we had a couple that were not applicable, we don't have high school, and there were some other things that we just, they weren't applicable to us as a district this size. So the one area we had a partially implemented was around evaluating all aspects of our K-8 programs annually, and it's not the case that we don't look at all our programs annually, but we need to develop a really strong protocol for how this is done year after year, and keeping data and information on that assessment that we do of our programming. So we entered into what's called a continuous improvement and monitoring plan, a SIM. It's somewhat of a corrective action plan, but there's no, we don't have to report any kind of data, we don't have to report different activities, there's just a timeline that I'll go over, and within those timelines, we have to just talk about the progress we've made towards creating a process. So in, oops, sorry, keep up, hold that, Michelle, sorry. So November 16th is our first reporting point. By that point, the district has said that we would be meeting to really look at a process to drive this work off our administrative team. We'll be reporting out again in January, and then a final report will be due in March. So we are actually starting this week, next week, sorry, working with Teachers 21, it's a consulting group that's going to be working with us to help develop some processes for our self-evaluation of our programs. This program also, the programs also include any out-of-school time, so our activities, our athletics, anything that kids can access here in our district. We really want to make sure that we're evaluating for equity, full access for all students, and that there's no barriers to any of our academic programs or our out-of-school time activities. We will be annually reviewing all these policies and practicing, practices to ensure that, again, we have equal access for all students, and we'll be also venturing into reviewing the mask policies. I know as a committee, this was done not that long ago, but it really needs to be looked at again, to really look at those areas that may need to be updated, things that we may need to adopt that are not currently in our policy book, and then it'll be continuous adjustment as necessary in communicating all these changes out to the stakeholders. So as I said, November, we will start to develop protocols, procedures, and tools on how we're going to conduct these annual self-assessments of all our programs. By January 11th, we will have work to train all of our relevant staff members on these protocols, procedures, and tools. We will be starting with our leadership team, our principals, our district administrators, and then in March, we will actually conduct a self-evaluation for next spring, and we will analyze all the results, we'll outline our conclusions, and we'll develop an action plan if there's any identified issues. I suspect I will be probably coming to the March meeting to report that work to all of you, so that you have an update on everything, and some of the committee work that the school committee does, some committee group work, may also kind of overlap with some of this with the policies and things like that. It was very brief, because we didn't really have any areas of non-compliance, this area was partially implemented, we did that huge curriculum audit a couple of years ago, which really did show that we began the process of looking at our academic programs, but we really need to do a better job of looking at our school time, athletics, intramurals, and close. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. While you're up there, Cher, if I could have permission to switch around an agenda item while Kim is up there?
Sure.
Other items that may not have been anticipated at the time of this posting, could she just give a very quick COVID update?
Yeah.
While she's up there?
Just got it today, so I said this would be perfect.
Yeah. Especially with school opening.
Yeah, it's good for the public, just to know, we're basically going back to normal, and this is what I keep telling everybody, there was no mask mandate, there's no long test and stay programming, we're going to be putting out some bullet pointed guidance for families in the community, but as far as testing, there'll not be testing offered, there would not be a requirement for parents and students to test or staff to test. Asymptomatic people will not be required to test, so there may be people walking around who are COVID positive but asymptomatic, they will be coming to school. And if you have a negative COVID test but may have symptoms, you are still able to come to school. So it's just about back to the way we were pre-COVID, but I just wanted to make that clear, because I know there are still people wondering about masks, masking in school, it's optional. And after we lifted the mask mandate this spring, we had many, many students and staff who chose to mask, and it was, I know there was concern about, you know, were kids going to be singled out, it was seamless. A lot of kids really chose to continue to mask, and some of our staff did, so we've had no issue, and it'll be a personal decision, but as far as the district, we have no mandates, we will be following these guidelines.
So just to reiterate, masks are still optional for people that want to wear them?
Except if they're COVID positive, I believe they still have to wear the mask five days after, is that true?
Um, that's one of the things we're going to discuss and put into those bulleted for families, it's a district decision that we'll have to look at. Health offices will still have to mask, our nurses will still be masked.
Right. But I mean, there's no more social distancing.
No.
We're really, I mean, we tried to do this last year, but normalcy is, is the goal here.
Okay.
So we're excited about that.
So what I'm taking away from this is masks are optional, except for health staff?
Yes.
Correct. And then if you are COVID positive, you may have to still wear a mask five days after you test?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
And it's, you know, as it was in the past, it's the honor system, and we ask parents to still inform us so that we can stay safe, but we will not be doing testing in the district, no test and stay, no availability to do tests or home tests.
Any questions? You good? Thank you.
It's just, you know, which I don't think is very necessary in here, is I know the Boston School Committee is trying to develop policies dealing with the, you know, what they've learned during the COVID procedures and so forth, and adopted into policy for the future. So, but I think that at this time, unless you want to give it some thought, you know, the policy committee, you know, whether that will be, really be necessary, or we wait for the Department of Education, if we ever have a, you know, situation, you know, where we have to review what their present trends are.
Well, we're having a policy subcommittee meeting shortly, I believe?
Yes.
So if you want to email me your concerns, John?
If you have any specifics that you want the committee to look at.
You're on the policy committee, are you?
No, it's just generally that.
Oh, you and I are on the policy committee? So we can bring it up at our policy committee?
Okay.
Are you trying to get rid of it?
No, I thought you were, it's been so changing, everything's been changing.
I haven't been to the meeting yet, that's why I'm plugged in.
So we can talk about it then?
But it's coming up.
Very soon, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
All right. Next, we have, I'd like to call Michelle Sylvia, the principal at Ford Middle School. She will be highlighting the changes with the staff handbook, and then that will require a vote from the committee, and then after that, she will be highlighting the changes with the student handbook, which will also require a vote.
So I know you have both documents. They're really all, anything that was updated were the dates, the dates and names. Other than that, there really is no change at all to either handbook. Just names and dates. Do you have any questions? Everything that was there last year is there this year, and there wasn't anything added. The traffic map is still in the student handbook, the traffic app, so.
There's going to be a statue of me out there, I'm telling you, a traffic, a traffic light with my face on it. Just one question for you, face coverings, is there anything, I can't remember.
We have it in the handbook, we have like additional addendum with the COVID information.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that, correct, from a policy standpoint? Okay, very good. So are there any, oh, first, let's, can we take a vote? Are we okay to take a vote?
Yeah, we should do them separately.
Yep, okay. Can I have a motion to approve the FMS staff handbook?
I'll make that as a motion.
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Do we need a roll call?
No.
No? All in favor?
Aye.
Obstain.
One abstention. And now we can move on to the FMS student handbook, if you don't mind. Can I have a motion to accept the FMS student handbook?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Next, to do similar thing with the elementary school is Principal Leah Chesney, and she will be highlighting both the staff and the student handbooks.
Hello, we also just like Ford Middle School only changed the dates that we have, everything else is almost identical. I think I did update the map, though, Sarah, it's a little easier.
I saw that. It's okay.
Yes, no, it just, you know, it's the same idea, I just didn't have as many arrows. Alloomat, everything is pretty much the same, on both the staff handbook as well as the para and student handbook.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. So can I have a motion to accept the AES staff handbook?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Check.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstain.
One abstention. All right, and can I have a motion to accept the AES student handbook?
So moved.
So we have John Howe-Crawf?
No.
No? Okay, there we go, John Tex and John Howe-Crawf. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chesney. And one more thing worth mentioning is, we did begin the security audit, it's pending, but the sheriff's office has been in conducting the audit, and as soon as I get the report, you know, we'll report out on that. But I did make the town aware that you had a strong interest in utilizing town meeting funds, if at all possible, to help with the recommendations that are coming out of this audit. Some things will probably be, you know, minimal cost, for example, one thing I heard is that the doors all have to be labeled, that's probably forty or fifty dollars, right? And then other things may be more costly, but as soon as I get that report, I will let you know, I know the town articles are due, I believe, next week, so I'm hoping to get something, but like, you know, he, the report's not going to outline specific cost, it's just going to outline a list of things of recommendation, so I don't know if you have an interest in, you know, requesting of the town a safety article where we can start some of this work, depending on what the report says, but, you know.
I think.
I just have to submit something by next week, and I know this is something that you brought up.
I don't think we should rush this. I, I think that the town deserves to know exactly what we're doing, so with the report, then we're going to have to talk about it ourselves, right?
Right.
And then we're going to have to quote it out, whatever we decide, and I just think a week is not enough time.
I agree.
So maybe for, for spring town meeting, I think that's, we'll have all the data and all the information.
Right, because then if you had some question about the audit itself, and you wanted to go with another company, let's say, you could also do that.
We don't want to rush this.
And that was one of my questions, are we still soliciting quotes from other?
We, we didn't, but I do have the name of another company, and I can't remember how much it was per square foot, but I can, I can get that information. I think it is costly, but we went with the one that was free to the district, because I think it's going to be helpful no matter what, we'll get some good information from there, so.
If we could, I would just, if we can just understand how much it would be to get a quote, and I would just like to understand kind of like what training that the folks have or get, or how frequently, let's say, they're a part of the sheriff's department versus what you would be getting from an independent group.
Okay. I do know we met, and we did have a couple of school committee members who met with Colonel Gabigan from the sheriff's office, he did give his background.
Sure.
You know, I think people were pretty satisfied with what he was proposing at the time, but I can definitely seek more quotes, if I do know of one company anyway that I can get some information from, and I can look into.
That's fine, and I, and I'll defer to John and Sarah, too, I just, I would personally like to just know what that is, and I'm honestly guessing that folks aren't qualified, it's just peace of mind.
No, I think that's a valid, it's an option. So you'll let them know, Paula, or let us know, and like, just an information?
Yeah, and I don't know if you, Mr. Tevez or Mrs. Holmes, if you wanted to add anything to this, but I think it's important that the committee understand that we are pending with it, and it's going, it's in progress, but I can continue to look at other companies as well.
Just curious, too, is, is the audit going to be conducted at all during times that kids are in school?
I can question that.
That's a good idea.
Because, because I think, you know, some of the audit items he was talking about was really in regards to policy procedures, and, and some of those, you know, does it cost anything to kind of correct or update some of those things? So I think it would be important for him to see the, the flow of the student body coming in perhaps and out of school, or something like that.
I could definitely bring it up to the sheriff's office.
They could add that in there, I think that's a really good idea.
So if we're not up against a weak deadline, you know, right?
Yeah, so that's what I wanted to make sure that you understood, that those articles were due next week, and it would be kind of rushed.
I think we need to do our due diligence.
Yes.
So if he could come by and see both schools?
Yep, while it's in session.
While it's in session.
And then I will look into the other quote and then get direction from the committee.
Okay.
Okay?
Question?
Yeah.
Sorry. The sheriff's office, are they evaluating any other school districts?
They did, they did grade in Bedford Regional Tech High School recently, and I know that there's one other district.
Durfee, he was doing Durfee.
He's joined Durfee, I think there's a couple of other districts that are now inquiring about the same process.
Wondering what, you know, what their expertise is in, in evaluating schools, and I'm saying, you know, with their background.
So the background, I know.
They may be very good in, in, you know, security in jails.
No, 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 it's, it's not.
But I, I just, no, I'm just raising that as a.
The Colonel gave his background.
And that's, Mr. Howe-Crawf, that's what I was asking, too, in terms of what training And that's, Mr. Howe-Crawfes, that's what I was asking too, in terms of what training do they have around doing this, right? Compared to maybe what somebody else.
I know the Colonel needs to get sites of schools where they've had mass shootings. So he's very well-versed in this area with schools. So, I mean, I feel perfectly comfortable, especially we're getting this service for free. So I know we'll learn from it. The question will be if the committee wants more information, okay? So, but I think whatever we want, like you just brought up, Mr. Tebs, you know, are they going to come while the school is in session? So I think we need to ask whatever it is we want of them and see how they can, you know, comply with what we're asking for.
I think it would be helpful if you sent out the Colonel's resume or how they sold it to you. Of why it would be a good idea for them to come out here and send it just as an FYI to committee members. I think that might answer a lot of questions they may have.
Also, a local police department, will they be involved in some type of evaluation with this?
So I do know.
Brought in with, you know, for their expertise.
Right. They do partner quite a bit, like our, our SRO is actually at the meeting. And they're in touch with Chief Richmond, so they do partner. They don't like to come into schools without the local police department being aware of what they're doing. Even when they come in weekly with the therapy dogs, we always have a local officer with, sometimes it's Sergeant Font, sometimes it's our SRO. So there's always an administrator from the schools. There's always a local police officer or, and the sheriff's office. So they don't like to come in, you know, on their own. They want to be very much in partnership and collaboration with the local PD.
And I also want to point out that, you know, he kicked off the meeting by saying, you know, just from walking around the campus. He said, "We're in really good shape in terms of, you know, safety and physical structures and things like that." So, you know, it's, this, this audit is really going deep into due diligence, I think, on that, so.
Yeah.
That's great.
We did, we did a study where we brought the SRO in a few years ago, and we did, you know, an audit. And we brought, you know, safety procedures in place. So, you know, of course, times have changed, it has to be revisited and updated.
Absolutely.
But a lot was done several years ago. Now, just, you know, bring that, you know, it's not that we're blazing new territory.
No.
No, it's, it's really updating of what, what we did a couple of years, a few years ago.
It was actually like almost a decade.
Huh?
It was almost like nine years ago, when we started with the double doors and all of that good stuff. Because that was the year I got on.
I mean, there are still schools that don't even have that.
Right.
Right?
The double access.
Right.
Double entry, so.
It took several, and interesting, it took several years after the incident that we had in ninety-three to say, "Hey, wait a minute. We've got to revisit this, this issue." And that's, and that's what we did, so now we are continuing the process.
Yeah. So I know Colonel Gavigan was very familiar with the Acushion incident, as he was with many incidents that have occurred around the country, so.
And Dr. Bailey, if you're, if you're going to send out kind of the Colonel's bio or whatever.
If I can obtain that, I will try.
If, if there is one for the company that you know of, that does it, then if you include that, that would be great. So we can kind of look at.
Absolutely.
All right. So do you have anything else?
That's all I have for tonight. Thank you so much.
All right, now we can have the business manager's report. Mr. Hyde? Intro, I'm sorry. Just make it short and sweet, that's all I want.
And don't talk about ice cream. Put that in his report.
Good evening, good afternoon, chair, committee, Superintendent Bailey. I project to start off by letting everyone, remind everyone that the Acushion School Business Office is committed to supporting continuous improvement, transparent communication, and fiscal responsibility, leading to student achievement and student success. We are a unified team, and purpose of being a high-performing school district, I hope that this meeting is one more step in that process. Before I get to my report, I just wanted to, again, thank you for this opportunity. I've enjoyed my time here at Acushion, the professionals I work with, I have tremendous respect for each and every one of them. The committee and stakeholders I met care deeply about this community, and it's really an impressive place. The leadership of Dr. Bailey has been refreshing. So I really enjoyed my time here, and I want to thank you again for that opportunity. So moving forward, the FY twenty-two budget seems like forever ago. It is close that we, I told Chairman, Chairman Turegolms this evening, that we are down to the zero. We extended the entire appropriation for FY twenty-two. The town accounts office is currently doing some reclassifications and some journal entries to just close off the fiscal year. So units is still a little messy to say, but we had meetings, Superintendent, I met with the town manager and the town accountant, assistant town accountant yesterday. They have some great ideas for us, just currently, just digressing a little bit here. But items that are in the Acushion Public School operating budget really are a town responsibility. For example, school choice. That's a, it's a Commonwealth expense that they, they charge. They offset the cost of school choice students, but somehow that's in our operating budget as well as in the town side. So the vocational, regional vocational technical high school, that's listed as your operating expenses, and it's not your operating expenses, it's the town of Acushion's operating expenses. Not the Acushion Public Schools, because those students that go to the Voc Techs are not Acushion Public School students. They're Acushion residents attending a different school. So you'll see very different things happening in the next year or so, and you'll be involved in those decisions throughout the way. But the town accountant, who is currently with the, down the hall, down the street, Todd Hassett, is the real deal. And I've been saying that since I met him, you know, he's been around the block. He's a local resident, I think he lives in Fairhaven or Rochester, he lives right down the street. He coaches mentors and works for, consults the districts all across the Commonwealth. He's right in our backyard, so he's just really, really, really good FYI. But everything's been a congruent. We're on to Cincinnati, we say, we're into FY twenty-four. But currently, the now, okay, our directors and our principals are in the, they're in the now. They're in FY twenty-three, yes, we all are really, but Superintendent and I are, you know, we're into twenty-four already. So I do want to let you know that we do continue to use this antiquated paper system in the business office. And, and it's just the way it's been. It's not good, bad, right, wrong. But we want to really add some efficiencies to this school system particularly. And I don't want to jump ahead, but I did meet with Patrick McIntyre, new business manager. He's, he's going to be great. He's, he's good. I had a nice day with him today. He went through a lot of, you know, just where we are in the system. He's all for, you know, digital, electronic purchase orders, processes and protocols that are on the website. Just really making things more efficient. The end of the year reports, just, we really had a great conversation with him today. So I really want to acknowledge the hard work that goes into just ordering anything. You know, ordering this pen is so labor-intensive currently. Where they're putting it to Amazon, it's going to business office, we're going to Amazon, ordering what they ordered, and put it on quadrupled purchase orders. It's just a lot. So the goal is to streamline, make more efficiencies, to open up their time to do what we all want them to do, right? Teaching and learning. And that's what I decided on preamble about, you know, student improvement and being a high-performing school district. It gets them out of the paper and into the classrooms. And I just want to say thank you for the work you do, because I know it's, it's arduous and it's intensive. But we're going to change all that, including expanding units, where they will have real-time into their operating budgets. You know, Leah doesn't need to call the business office to find out how much money she has in her supply line. This should be something that she should have automatic, real-time access to. And we're going to do that. And it's going to be, may be a cost, may not be a cost, depending on how many lessons we have. The town is trying to close up their side from, without a treasurer, you may know that. Their interim accountants, the new town manager, they're trying to get their act together on that side. And the schools have been on autopilot, and they've been doing a good job. They really have. And my predecessor, and the leadership of Dr. Bailey, everyone's been really working hard to make things work. But these people here, they need more access. They need to have more responsibility for their own budgets and less reliance on other people for their real responsibility. So we're working on that as well. And electronic POs, I think it's going to happen in the very near future, as soon as we can get the town to close up twenty-two and give us some opportunity to spend some time together and making protocols and processes with the accountant's office and the treasurer's office. So that's our goal there. In terms of projects, and this is just a recap of something I've said to you already. Josh Smith and Steve Luet, kudos, kudos, kudos. You look around the building and they look like they're a mess, and they are, because there's a lot going on. There is a lot. And size of projects, it just moves, and floors, and cleaning, and inspections. You know, just inspections alone takes a lot of time. And they're all mandated. You know, the boiler inspections, the roof inspections, the electronic inspection, the alarm inspections. So it takes a lot of time. And we've had some staff turnover in the department and from multiple reasons, as this is on, I looked at too earlier. So they've been juggling, but they're doing a great job, and I'm really proud of the work that they've been doing. So what's going on right now is the sign replacement project. You may have seen those. The new Wayfinder signs are installed. The school signs are coming, hopefully this Friday, if not Monday. But they're ready to go. They've been painted, they're all ready for installation. The hardware is all in. They're just trying to get the company's labor to schedule us, and to plan us this Friday for the school signs. The big electronic sign, they have, you know, as you know, supply chain issues, the chips are what's killing us. That's not expected till October delivery, but they're on schedule. We've worked with the local electrician to get the power out there. Again, Steve is doing everyone's work preparing for the signs. The roof replacement is a major, major project, as you know, right? Big project. We're up on the roof every, every day, and Dr. Bailey up on the roof. She's carrying ladders, she should probably be superintendent. But we're up on the roof, and Leah and Julia attended a meeting today. We meet every Tuesday at one o'clock. And, you know, through the superintendent, you may, you know, with her, obviously, partnering with her. Check out a one o'clock meeting on Tuesdays. You learn a lot what's going on on that roof. The architects, the OPM who works for us has been fabulous. Although we've been through three OPMs since the project started just six weeks ago. They're on, they're on it, and they're so knowledgeable, and they're on, on every single nail of a roof. The architect Nora Scholl from Next Base Design, she's holding that roofing contractor's feet to the fire. We had water, we had problems, we had water damage. If you have not heard that yet, you're hearing it live. We had water problems last past week. One day, something was not sealed tightly. It poured like crazy, and we had some water damage in the offices over at the Acushion Elementary School main office. Hundred percent being paid for, not by us. Their insurance companies take care of it. We don't have to inform my, our insurance company, because they're taking care of the whole thing. But again, Steve Luet was partnering right away with the architect, the engineers, the builder, the OPM, and of course Leah and Juliana to keep the pay for that, yes.
Will it be finished by the time school starts?
What would be finished?
The roof.
No.
It won't?
Good question.
We got an update today, but I'll let you finish, and then we can certainly talk about that.
We're getting close.
We're getting close.
It's not, we had serious labor issues, they had serious labor issues. And again, there, we got a schedule, we have a timeline. I think the roof two, which is near the little kids, the little playground, I think you call it, the little toy, we're trying to get that done prior to school, which is the twenty-ninth to the fifth. It's like seven different roof sections, and they're on, three are completed, and they're on the fourth now. Opened, finished the last three, and the first, I think it's the nineteenth of September is the date, and I think it was heard today. But again, we're, everyone's on the same page. We all obviously want it done. Not going to happen, to be honest with you, by the start of school.
But if I could just interject, just so you know, they've been working double shifts every day and Saturday. They've had labor issues, they've added as many people as they can to work the project. One of the things that was really important to me today was making sure that everyone is safe while this work continues, while students are and staff are back at school. So we made, they made sure, they're making sure that the front entrance part of the roof will be done before staff and students come back to school. We are going to put cones where any, you know, whichever roof is being done, there will be cones outside, like twenty feet away in case there's debris, but it should not be a problem. And, and the communication has been really good between the builders and us. And they will not be doing work during entrance and dismissal. I know that we've asked the principal to send the schedule of when students are outside for recess. They want to make sure that they're away from the areas that we're utilizing. But we also don't want to slow this project down. Daylight hours are, you know, not as, it's not going to be as late as it's been. We want this project finished. We've been very fortunate that the weather has been very cooperative. Again, we did have a little bump in the road with the recent storm, and the roof wasn't secured, but they are dealing with it. Everything that we've asked for, they've been great about working with us. And again, I think it's all about communication to make sure that our kids, if we can't use one entrance, we go around for one week. But I don't anticipate that it will be a huge disruption to the operations at the elementary school for more than a week or two. Right?
Dr. Bailey, just any concern that there'll be noise? Will the kids be distracted?
No, so they've already, my understanding is, and I'm not an expert at building roofs, but from what we asked today, they've already taken off a lot of the lights.
Did you say to the rip, the ripping off of the old material early in the morning, prior to nine AM, so the commitment?
Yeah, I know, I, I've heard it a couple of times.
Right, so they're really cognizant of the fact that children and staff are in school. It's teaching and learning time, and they're really trying to work with us as best they can. But the early, they did mention today that the louder noise would be early morning, so.
And they work for, with MSBA, they work with schools for a living. These contractors, school-specific contractors.
That's right.
So they're very student-friendly and school-friendly. But it has, not only has it been hot up there, but I did want to just mention that the minutes of these meetings on Tuesdays are available. So I think if you're interested in what's going on, we can just forward those minutes along to you. Very detailed, and they're, they're coming right from the architect, who is the one that is our eyes and ears on the roof. And so that's that. The AES library is come on great. Have you ever had a chance to go over there? It's been painted, the carpets are in, the bookcases have been reinstalled. Now we're just, you know, putting books in cases. But it's been a working process, and I would really like to say kudos, obviously, to Leah and Juliana for quarterbacking that project. Again, running a school and quarterbacking a library renewal is just an extra task, and they're doing a great job with that. The AC units in there are, you know, messy. They're old, and they're not very productive. So we are looking at cooling that area. And we have a temporary fix right now, we'll get a long-term capital fix down the road. Education technology, your curriculum instruction assessment director, Mrs. Reedary, has applied for a grant, USAC, I think it is, for the federal grant for technology. Two hundred Chromebooks. That's not an entitlement, but I think we're in the driver's seat for that, for those Chromebooks for our students, which would be great for the district. You know, that's a hundred grand right there. O'Neil Consulting has been contracted by the Commonwealth to look through the grants and assign monetary expenses to the district, so great job with Angie on that. But we have Chromebooks for everybody in the district. When school opens up in September, we're ready to go. Collective bargaining, Superintendent alluded to this earlier, and thank you to Mr. Hood and Stanning, who have teamed up with Superintendent Bailey and Angie myself. All units are, at least have TAs, right? Pretty close with all our units. Teachers, I believe, assigned and sealed. The custodians, I believe, assigned and sealed. The secretaries and paraprofessionals, they have a term of agreement. They'll come to you for approval at some point. But it's great to get those out of the way and just focus again on teaching and learning. I do want to acknowledge that through all the conversations, no matter what side of the table they were on, it was a steadfast pursuit for student learning. It was just a relentless focus on what's best for kids. And I was really, that's why I like this district, it was impressive to see that even the unit side, which can be against the management side, but it was all about what's best for kids. And they catch the middle and had a great agreements, and I hope it will be signed by both sides. The new business manager, Patrick McIntyre, I mentioned earlier, he's going to be great. He's hit the ground learning. He's, he's from the accounting side. He's got those Xs and Os down. And he's, what I understand from his credentials and from people that I know that know him, he is like the business manager of this county district. Even though he doesn't have that role, this is his first gig. He's going to be great. He does a lot that business managers do in terms of managing, you know, payroll, personnel, grants, transportation facilities, et cetera. He's really hands-on, so that should be great for these folks. The summer intern, we had a wonderful young lady, and I'm not saying I'm going out of line, there are chairs in front of me. This kid is fabulous. We had a high school junior, Emma Goems. Give her such her summer. And I kept pushing for her to be paid. So they paid fourteen bucks an hour. The payment in which, oh, no, no, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want. And I would have been like, babe, give me the money, right? Show me the money. She worked all summer long, religiously, professional, great attention to detail. She learned a two, a thing or two about municipal finance and municipal law, Massachusetts general law. But she was just a real impressive young lady who did great work for us. She shredded literally forty boxes of just junk, of stuff that's been around from two thousand six and two thousand eight and two thousand twelve. So we're trying to get rid of those papers where you place people. But we're very grateful for Emma, not only for part of her accomplishments this summer and what she does in her own life, but for giving back to her community where she went to school. So kudos to her. Good job, mom, too.
Thanks.
Our food service director, Shelley Mello, is off and running. She's a new director. She was Massachusetts Manager of the Year, but taking the step to the dark side, right? Going to become the big boss. She's doing a great job. She really is. She's been providing food for our summer programs. She's got the refrigerators getting filled up, ready to go, ordering for the summer. We have, you know, a supply chain issues there as well, but she's got the food service at the time and ready to go for the first day of school. And finally, my, two more things. One is, one acknowledge the town hall again. We continually publicly acknowledge Tom Manager Jamie Kelly, town accountant Todd Hassett, assistant town accountant Nick Montalvo for this point collaboration. They've been partners with me, partners with superintendent, partners with the district, partners with Kim and Angie and our grants. They have been absolutely, it's awesome to have that tight unified team. A solid relationship between town hall and schools doesn't happen a lot. Usually there's a divide between the town and the schools. But here in the Acushion, especially with the current team we have, they see eye to eye on everything. And it's really refreshing to have someone on the other side get it, what we're going through and we understand what they're going through and it's a good team. So kudos to the town hall. Last but not least, I may or may not be here, this might be my last report, who knows? But I would encourage the school committee, policy subcommittee to review EEAA, your workers and riders and transportation policy and KF, which is your use of facilities. Now, you might remember when I first got here, I said, "Oh, same circus, different plans," right? It's the same stuff in every district. EEAA and KF needs attention, needs your attention. Because right now, the KF, for example, you know, you can use that gym six days a week for 50 bucks. It's not feasible, it's not, it's not good for the district. It's great for the community, right? It's great for these nonprofits that want to come in and use the facilities. And we want them to use our facilities, but a lot of it deals with our children. But at the end of the day, it's costing Acushion Public Schools to have districts to have outside vendors come in and use our facilities. So I think we need to have a conversation about that. I'd be happy to meet with you at any time, give you suggestions or recommendations. But EEAA and KF, we might just want to consider looking at them at some point on the road.
Can we add that to the policy agenda?
Yeah, and just a point of information, the next policy subcommittee meeting is August 30th.
You got that, John? I didn't want to look at my phone.
He was directing it to me because I opened my big mouth.
If there are no other questions, I conclude my report.
Good. Any questions, committee members? Go ahead.
I just publicly would like to thank Mr. Hyde. He stepped in, I think we were only one week without a business manager and he was able, the timing worked out. But it's not goodbye because there will be a transition between him and Patrick McIntyre, the new business manager, and I'm sure that you will be around next month. So I know you're, you know.
No, you will be.
It's been really nice, though, having someone who knows the job, you know, has worked in other school districts, knows how to collaborate with all the players and really is concerned about the students and the achievement. And it always comes back to that with him, which I love. So this isn't goodbye because, like I said, you will be working closely with Patrick McIntyre for a little while, right?
Students first.
That's right. So thank you so much for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. And on behalf, yeah, on behalf of the school committee, we thank you for pitching for us and being so involved and all that good stuff. Being involved in communication and just your hands on approach is much appreciated. Thank you.
I just want to add, appreciate you looking at and bringing to our attention the cooling system, you know, the, that we're looking in another few years, you know, all reports, which is shaking up Congress, by the way. We're looking at 125 degree days, you know, in the future. And how that would affect, you know, schools and the performance of children and so forth. And maybe, you know, as you're working with, with us, you know, for a long time, that look at, you know, what the State Department of Education is just doing as far as getting grants and, you know, to really update our cooling system. Because in another 10 years, you know, it's going to be, they're predicting some really severe issues. I'm glad you looked at, you know, the condition of our, you know, cooling system and hope we'll make some recommendations before you go.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? So I think we are going to have, the next part of our meeting is school community member reports. Does anybody have anything to add? Any of our members? No? Okay. We do have communication and information. We have some COVID letters, a COVID report. We have a report card letter, a DESI letter and a CIMP statement of insurance. So just make sure you take a look at those at your leisure. And if there isn't anything else, I would like to have, actually, our next meeting, our next regular school committee meeting will be held in the John Chavaras Library at Ford Middle School on Tuesday, September 13th, 2022 at 5:30 PM. And I'd like to have a motion, or can I have a motion to adjourn our regularly scheduled meeting and enter into executive session not to return?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second?
I do need to take a roll call for this. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mr. Alkirk?
Yes.
Good, meeting adjourned. Thank you all for attending.